Good evening. Today is Monday, August 9th, and it is 7:18 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order. Before I do that, though, I would like to remind those of you participating in this evening's meetings, the face coverings are required in all city facilities, and we are extending that requirement to the meetings of the Lansing City Council. City Council members, city officials and staff, as well as members of the public at all council committee meetings and city council meetings are required to wear face covering. I will ask also during public comment that you keep your mask on to avoid the need to sanitize the microphone in between speakers. We will grant, obviously, medical exemptions, but please keep your mask on the duration of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Spataford.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
President.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum this evening. As we move on to meditation and Pledge of Allegiance, are there any individuals or groups that the council members, mayor, or the city clerk would ask that we keep in our thoughts as we reflect privately? All right, seeing none, if you'll join me for a moment of meditation.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have first on our agenda is special ceremonies.
Yes, this evening we have a special ceremony, and I would like to invite up our Parks Director Brett Kishinsky. We'll be hearing the Landscape Architects and Planners Award for Rotary Park. Mr. Kishinsky.
(inaudible). So we do have a presentation here on an award for Rotary Park. Just a little bit of a reminder of Rotary Park. It was constructed in 2019. It is just a little over two acres. That includes an ADA kayak launch, a beach, a vibrant plaza with a large fireplace, a magical lighted forest, and a new venue for small concerts and events underneath the Shihawasi Street Bridge. It also allows better access to the river with a concrete embankment that gives steps down towards the river. The purpose of this park development was to spur economic development, awareness of the Grand River, and to create a vibrant place in downtown Lansing. Early reports are that this project has exceeded those expectations, and this has become a must-see destination. Rotary Park is meant to be a central gathering place unlike any other. It allows for flexible programming space that anyone can use for social gathering, corporate outings, strolling along the river trail, concerts, and many other innovative uses. So for that, the American Society of Landscape Architects has annual awards, and this award was actually received by the City of Lansing in 2020, and we wanted to represent it here at council and from the public as well. Joining me today is Bob Ford of LAP Creative, and Bob was instrumental in the design for this. He is the president and founder of LAP Creative and also a Lansing-based business here in the downtown. So it did receive, again, from the American Society of Landscape Architects, it received the Merit Award, and I just wanted to read a few of the judges' comments on it. The jury liked the creation of a variety of diverse spaces there, the sense of enclosure created with the overhead structures with such things as the string lights and the canopies. The artistic lighting at night was very successful. They loved the color throughout all the different types of lightings, the sail structures and the ceiling. They really appreciated the accessibility that was given to the water and the way the existing apartments, the bridge, and even the buildings across the river help enclose the park and make it feel like an oasis in the bustling, busy city. So this project is a showcase, it was called a showcase of landscape architectural value there. So with that, Bob, if you want to go ahead and present that to the mayor and Peter there.
Thank you, Mayor.
So that is the Merit Award from the American Society of Landscape Architects. It also has some of the contributors to that, not only Bob, which I mentioned, but again, this project was funded through Rotary and through our community foundation as well as some others on here. So, Mayor?
Well, thank you, Brett. I think that's the most I've ever heard Brett speak at one time.[372.31][372.31](laughter) And he's hooked just about everything I was going to say. But this is really exciting. We spent a lot of time and hard work from right when I first came into office to getting this done. We worked very hard with the community foundation, with many of the sponsors. If you remember what was there and you compare it to what's there now, you see the incredible transformation that that riverfront site is taking on and see that being recognized by the landscape architects statewide, nationally, it's really exciting. It shows that what we're doing here in Lansing, especially on our riverfront, it's working, it's a model for other cities, so it is really exciting. So Bob, thank you for your design work and all of your hard work, a wonderful citizen and business owner here in the City of Lansing, which we appreciate, and I do want to thank all the various sponsors. The City of Lansing certainly played a major role in this, but we also had so many other sponsors that put their dollars in, their skin in the game, and I really hope that everybody will spend some time out at Rotary Park, check out the beach, check out the new dock, check out the lighted forest and everything else that Brett said, so I don't have to repeat him. But thank you, Bob. Thank you to the landscape, the American Society of Landscape Architects, and to all the staff that did such hard work and all the sponsors.[456.28][456.28](applause)
Can you leave that, Brett? Thank you. Okay, next we are to comments by councilmember and the city clerk.
Councilmembers wishing to make comment this evening. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple things. I just wanted to briefly touch on, and I think Councilmember Hussein probably will too, the March for Violence. That was this past Saturday. It was a great event. Mike McKissick and Mikey 23 Foundation, we marched from Pilgrim Rest Church down to the corner of Holmes Road and Pleasant Grove, and then we had to walk back again, and that was a pleasant surprise, but it was a great opportunity. We had, you know, a lot of community groups out there, which is what it's always about. We had, the police were there, our interim police chief was there, we had folks from the City of Lansing there, Ms. Fountain was there. It was just a great opportunity and a great chance to just fellowship with folks and support Mike McKissick, so I wanted to just mention that. I also just want to mention really quick that Miranda Burton Hinton, I'm sorry, give me, she is putting on a benefit show on, it'll be on August 29th, and it is Laugh is Life. It's a comedy show in honor of her son, Marcus, who was murdered last year. And so if you're interested in purchasing tickets, I'm sorry, I cannot see today. Please, yeah, I'm sorry, and it's Saturday, August 28th, 2021. Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. It's at Sexton High School Auditorium, 102 McPherson Avenue in Lansing at 6:00 PM. If you're interested in tickets, tickets are $25, and they're only doing pre-sales, so you can come, you can contact Miranda Burton at mirandaburtonhinton@gmail.com. So it's for a worthy cause and to continue in memory of her son. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity. A few things, and my colleagues on council did see my response to an email that I received. It was either early today or late yesterday. There have been some questions pertaining to a few things in southwest Lansing that I wanted to address. The first is the historical Malcolm X marker on South MLK. And the email that I actually forwarded on was probably about the 10th email. We try as hard as possible to be transparent and to make sure that folks have important information as we get it, and I clearly dropped the ball as this and a few other individuals aren't in the know in terms of what's happening. So if you don't know what I'm talking about, there's a Malcolm X historical marker or was on South MLK, and it was destroyed earlier this year. What we did as a city, in terms of our public service departments, we actually picked up that sign and we handed it off to the state, as the state actually is the rightful owner of that sign. In May, the necessary funds were obtained in order to fix that sign, and folks like Representative Sarah Anthony are now working with Malcolm X's family to make sure that the fix, if you will, is appropriate, and we're looking to actually enhance that sign. And so what we're looking at at this point is a reinstallation in the fall, and we'd like to obviously couple that reinstallation with a celebration, okay, and an educational component. Secondly, in that email, there was some discussion about, and I think it's appropriate that Delisa Fontaine is in the audience, and she has worked incredibly, sorry, she has worked incredibly hard on this issue. The Southwest Action Group actually has their own town square now in southwest Lansing, and this is at the intersection of Pleasant Grove and Holmes. It's actually southwest of the intersection. And through an Arts Impact Grant, we actually had a beautiful piece of art installed at that location. That art consisted of, not consists of, but consisted of four panels, really meaning to represent the rich diversity and strength of southwest Lansing and the limitless possibilities of southwest Lansing. In any event, one of the panels, it was meant to really portray a multicultural, genderless child, looking up at the stars and really considering the limitless possibilities, okay, and that was really to represent southwest Lansing and what the citizens feel in southwest Lansing, right, is really the future of our community. In any event, upon installing, members of, a few members of the African-American community actually reached out to me, a few members of the Southwest Action Group, as well as the mayor's office, and said, look, here's what we see, okay? And as a history teacher, this was incredibly concerning to me, what we see is an African-American woman on her back. We sprung to action and we removed that panel immediately. And we have been working with the artist ever since in order to fix that. We believe we have a fix. We also had to cobble together the dollars in order to do that. Personally, I even went so far as to promise that I could cover the $1,500 to $2,500 personally in contingency funds in order to get that redone and reinstalled. I'm not a wealthy man, but I thought it was that important. City of Lansing has come to the table as well, and we are looking now at about four to six weeks in terms of the fix, and then we will reinstall after that. So when you guys pass that, I think there's been a lot of question as to why that panel is gone. That's why the panel is gone, and I want to give credit to the administration, I want to give credit to the Southwest Action Group, the artist, Delisa Fontaine. As soon as that concern came about, that panel was gone, okay? That being said, I also wanted to announce tentatively a constituent contact meeting for this Saturday, 10 to 12 noon at 6:03:00 South MLK, that's at 517 Coffee. Our intention is to have an open-air constituent contact meeting and to really focus on economic development in south Lansing, particularly economic development along that corridor of South MLK. With the recent reclassification, if you will, of the transmission right here in Ingham County to, absolutely, to substantial, we are, again, proceeding cautiously with the understanding that we might have to cancel that depending on what type of guidance we get from our local health officials, okay? So again, tentatively, this Saturday, 10 to 12 noon. I was going to announce the Laugh is Life comedy show. I highly encourage folks to get tickets for that. Miranda Burton Hinton is doing incredible things, and we really need to support her in her efforts. With regards to the Stop the Violence March, it was a fantastic event. Didn't have the opportunity to come out. What I really liked about it was that it was clear that it was a call to action, right? That that was not necessarily the action, but it was a call to action. And there were a lot of people saying, okay, why? And I had some great, great conversations, you know, what is it that allows for four liquor stores to be at a corner? What is it that allows predatory lending establishments to descend on poorer communities? What is it that allows for parks in impoverished and depressed areas to lack amenities, to lack fitness pads, to lack, right? And right here in the City of Lansing even, we kind of concentrate those things downtown and in the historic core. What is it that allows for curriculum within school districts to not be equitable? And really educating, so it was really about attacking the underlying causes of gun violence, disrupting the underlying causes of gun violence. And so I think the conversations that came out of that, I think are going to move the ball down the field, and I'm excited about that. Part of that march, 1910, Rayvon Herfe, the owner of 1910 Food Market at Pleasant Grove and Holmes, he heard about this. The march was at noon, he heard about it at about 11:30. He immediately sprung into action, that's kind of the spirit of southwest Lansing. He filled up, he had shopping carts, filled them up with water, donated hot dogs, did whatever he could to support the effort, and he did it, you know, very quietly. It wasn't posts on Facebook and things like that, so I took the opportunity to capture some pictures and put them on Facebook because I really thought people should understand the kind of, the spirit that we have and the kind of actors that we have in southwest Lansing that are really trying to be a part of on the solution. I appreciate the opportunity. That's all I have.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. If you haven't been down that corridor of Pleasant Grove and Holmes Road, drive down there. There's just some great stuff happening. 1910 is doing renovations. We've got the store across the street that's changing its facade. It is really kind of an exciting, moving place right now where folks are getting down there and they're cleaning up. You'll see Councilmember Hussein there at any given time cleaning up the area, but it is an exciting corner, and I think only more good things are to come. But I did want to say that you have to come down there. There's food, there's everything you want in those four corners, but it's also a lot of energy as well. Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. I just want to add to Councilmember Hussein's comments about the marker for Malcolm X. If you're not aware of the exact location of that, it's on MLK in Vincent Court. And so you might not have seen it before or driven past it and seen the marker but not known exactly what it was, so I did want to highlight the exact location of where that marker has been in the past, and it's my understanding we'll go back in the same location.
And if I may, just very quickly, I also want to thank Kristiana James from Representative Anthony's office. She's actually on hand with us tonight, and she has worked incredibly hard on this issue as well.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please move on, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, well, the Clerk's office has some comments to wrap up the city elections. So on behalf of City Clerk Chris Wulp, I'd like to thank all the election workers, Clerk staff, and the public for being part of another safe, secure, and accurate election, city primary election. Second, I'd like to introduce Cheryl Washington, who's on our staff at the Clerk's office, newest member of our team, joined us earlier this year. She is Clerk Wulp's scheduler and records clerk. And last, I'll take a moment to, about the upcoming general election. We've been getting a few calls about voting from home and what is the process to get a ballot mailed to them, again, like they did last year. And due to state law, a voter has to sign an application to vote at home every election cycle, which is usually once or twice a year. No one automatically receives a ballot without the Clerk's office getting an application. And so if you still have your application for the primary and the general, you can sign it and drop it off at our office or in our drop boxes. We will unseal our drop boxes by Wednesday, and then the Clerk's office will be mailing out applications to vote at home, it's otherwise known as absentee voting, to every voter who has yet to complete one. You can save postage by dropping those applications off at any of our 15 drop boxes located at every fire station, community center, and more. To find the closest location, or if you have questions, you can call us at 483-4131, or go to lansingvotes.com. And last thing, I want to thank Nicole Lynn. She's wrapping up her semester, her summer with us, going back to that school in Ann Arbor with her best of luck, and we appreciate all the work she did. She was our first hybrid intern who worked both remotely from Grand Rapids and in the office as well. So, thank you. And so next, we're on to community event announcements. Any community announcements? Okay. And next, we are to speaker registration for public comment legislative matter. You have about one more minute to complete a blue sheet to speak on any items, item three through 14, which includes the five ordinances for introduction. So if you want to speak, you must sign in on the blue sheet. So now we're on the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to offer a whole variety of congratulations. Wonderful job to the Police Athletic League for their Skills in Drills event about two weeks ago. It was awesome to see so many young people and so many police officers, most of them out of uniform, playing basketball and learning the drills. Thank you to all the coaches that showed up for that. Similarly, a week ago, Saturday, we had a Lansing Youth Football Event. DA Jones spearheaded that. I think we all know DA and what a great event that was. My understanding is Delisa Fontaine, who's already been referenced, her son is now a football player, so congratulations to Lisa, also to Bishop David Maxwell, whose grandson is also now a football player and very excited. I want to remind everybody that there is music at the Nelson Building downtown every Thursday in the summer from 4:30 to 6:30, so if you're just looking for a little bit of time and want to hear some free music, come on down to the Nelson Building, which is on Washington Square. We had a great announcement with the school district about an English as a Second Language swimming classes that we're offering at the Schmidt Center. We all know that drowning is the second highest death incident for children after, I believe, auto accidents, and being able to teach young people, especially in a second language, is incredible. So I want to thank the school district and our Parks staff. We were able to put that together, and it's really, oh, and the YMCA, just a great, a great thing that we're offering for our citizens. I want to congratulate the good folks at Jazz Fest who put together another great event. I want to congratulate the Lansing Common who successfully finished their season. I got to go to a game finally, and it was incredible. We won two to one over, I believe, Livonia. In future events, the one that I have listed on September 9th is the Expungement Clinic. This council worked to add money to the budget. I know many of you were involved, including the council president, to add money to the budget, and our legal is putting together an expungement clinic on September 9th, so we are looking forward to that and helping out our citizens to get to expunge their records. As you all know, we have the mask mandate within city buildings now, and that was mentioned by the council president. Also, in case you haven't already heard, the eviction moratorium is on hold due to CDC recommendations that until October 3rd, they are, it's on hold. As Ingham County and Lansing are now in the substantial category, under the CDC rulings, we are now on hold with our eviction moratorium. So I think that's really important as people try and live their lives, and we want to keep people from becoming homeless. Certainly, if anybody's having trouble paying their rent or their mortgages, contact our HRCS or our housing ombudsman. We have a lot of money, which we have appropriated somewhere upwards of $30 million towards assistance, so please contact 211. That's probably the easiest thing. If you have housing issues and you need financial assistance, contact 211, and they can get you with the right people. But the moratorium has been pushed back to October 3rd. And did I get a date wrong? Looks like I got a date wrong. The September, the Expungement Clinic is the 9th, it's the 10th? It's the 10th, sorry. That is the 10th? Sorry to our legal team who are working so hard on it. Anybody out there, the Expungement Clinic is the 10th, not the 9th. My apologies. And that's what I have got, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question from Councilmember Spitzley, it looks like.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a senior thing coming up?
Oh, we do, we have a senior fair.
And also a mobile food bank that is tomorrow? I'm just checking.
Yes, we do. You know, I wrote down all this stuff like an hour ago, and you're right. We do have our mobile food bank, thank you very much. I had forgotten that, and we have our senior fair. When is that? It's this week.
Thursday.
It's Thursday. This is what I get for not going through my calendar. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Spitzley. We do, for all the seniors out there, we have our senior fair Thursday at 10:00 AM, Thursday at 10:00 at Pat and, not in Pat Gil, at Gardner, at Gardner on the south side.
It's nine to two at Gardner.
I have 10:00 on my calendar. All right, nine to two at Gardner.
Can we just announce it?
I do, I have 10:00 to two at Gardner, you're right. But there will be breakfast, there will be lunch, and then anybody who is uncomfortable with coming into the building, we will provide food for them to take with them. We were going to have all options. I do have 10:00 to two on my calendar, that's my fault. So it'll be 9:00 until 2:00. And thank you to Valerie Marchand, who's out there watching, and sent me the same thing as Councilwoman Wood said it. But yes, we have those two events, the, I'll get the mobile food pantry information as well.
If you, if you allow me.
Please, yes, please.
There's a mobile food bank distribution tomorrow, August 10th, 2020. It's at the Alfreda Schmidt Center, so there's a 2:00 PM registration, and then they're going to do a distribution from 3:00 to 5:00, but it's, you stay in your car and they then distribute it, distribute the food to you. It's on, it's at the Alfreda Schmidt Center, 5825 Wise Road in Lansing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Sorry, I forgot about one community event that's happened this Wednesday, August 11th at 7:00 PM. It is the last of the Summer Concert Series. It will be hosted at Fenner Nature Center. It's hosting the Lansing Symphony Orchestra. So that will be at 7:00 PM at Fenner Nature Center, and we also have a special guest. Our Michigan State Representative Sarah Anthony will be there to be the guest narrator for the classic Peter and the Wolf. So I hope to see you guys there at 7:00 PM this Wednesday, August 11th. Thanks.
I wasn't invited? All right, Mr. Clerk, move on.
All right, we are to public comment legislative matters. Legislative matter consists of the following items on the agenda, from items three to 14, which will include the five ordinances for introduction. Public may comment for up to three minutes, and our first and only speaker is Loretta Stanaway.
And I will remind folks, please to keep your masks on at public comment this evening. Thank you.
Well, after that last bit of the committee of the whole, I'm unclear as to whether or not council is still going to act tonight on reconvening voting, is that a possibility of that?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, so we're then, next, we're follow on to the consent agenda.
Is there any item that the committee wishes to pull from the consent, the council wishes to pull from the consent agenda? All right, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, if I could have three and four pulled. Sorry, so I'd like to be able to speak to, or have, I should say, Councilwoman Dunbar speak to her appointment, and then we also have Nancy Malo in attendance, and number four pertains to the Eastside Neighbored Organizations, Eastside Summer Fest, and I just think it'd be a great opportunity if she could come to the podium and speak briefly.
All right, Councilmember Betts, would you like to pull the item with your name next?
Let's do that.
All right, there. Let's obliterate the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Clerk, and please call them as necessary, but let's handle the appointment first.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Dunbar, if you'd like to make a motion, please.
Thank you. I'm going to move the appointment of Kristiana James to an at-large position on the Park Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. I'll make the motion, and then I will talk to her qualifications.
That is a proper motion before us. Councilmember Dunbar, if you'd like to discuss.
Thank you. I rarely see a candidate come through with the extensive resume that she came through with. Her interest in the parks, her dedication to the environment, to equitable recreational opportunities in the city, and her commitment to Lansing were impressive, refreshing, and also she got to get questions from Councilmember Hussein, who also served on the Parks Board before he came here, so we got to hear his concerns, your philosophy, and I am just thrilled to have the opportunity to have you serve in this capacity for us. So thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Vice President.
Just briefly, because I too appreciate it, the effort that was put forth into the application. We very, very rarely see, you know, that type of response, and there was almost, I would say, almost no need to even interview her. almost, I would say, almost no need to even interview her. But then I really appreciated the conversation that ensued over one piece of. There was, I think it was her first or second paragraph, there was some discussion about equitable distribution of resources. And then she kind of moved into this, you know, discussion of downtown and kind of the historic core. But that's also because she had three or four different boards she was applying for, and one of them dealt with, I think it was either Leftford or Downtown Lansing. But in any event, I really appreciated the discussion. And she talked a lot about, as an at-large member, the importance of, you know, really looking at what we have inventory, you know, system-wide, and ensuring that we are not just equal in our distribution of amenities and recreational facilities, but that we're truly equitable. And the, and the fitness pads, frankly, came up. And the fact that downtown and the southeastern most edge, I'm not, not knocking southeast Lansing, but the southeastern most edge probably aren't the most accessible locations for those types of facilities, and certainly aren't serving, you know, the most critical need that we have in our community. And so how do we, you know, take a different look at, at the distribution of resources and ensuring that we're propping up and scaffolding our most vulnerable, our most economically depressed people? And I thought Councilwoman Dunbar made a great point. She said, you know, a lot of times we talk about the number of parks that we have throughout our system and the fact that that's pretty equitable. But what we don't talk about is that green space is not necessarily recreational space. And so we really have to get serious about, you know, implementing facilities and amenities and things of that nature throughout the park system. You know, and again, when we talk about really helping people ascend for their circumstances, we know the importance of health outcomes. And in some of those areas that I'm referencing, we have a dearth of fitness facilities and things of that nature. And so for a lot of people, their parks and, and their recs, you know, kind of department is it. And so we have to do a better job, and I think Christiana is committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any other comments? All right. There's a proper motion before us with Councilmember Dunbar. Christiana, you're here. If you want to come down as we vote, I will ask that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve the City of Lansing.
Raise your right hand. You swear affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Michigan, and faithfully discharge the duties of office of Park Board member according to best of your ability.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Fulkers, Fulkers is here? No? Very good. Got a new boss tonight, so I have to get used to the different set of expectations. Next item is a community funding application for the Eastside Neighborhood Organizations, Eastside Summer Festival. That is also coming from Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. So we saw Nancy Malo in committee to talk about this festival, which sounds, looks, is planned to be amazing. It's going to be on Friday and Saturday, August 27th and 28th. I know that you didn't come down necessarily during the, but we could have her come down and talk about it, couldn't we, at the podium? Or do you want me to just do it?
Go for it.
Okay. I'll try to do it justice. We're blocking off a large chunk of Michigan Avenue. There's going to be a car show, bands out there. The street will be closed for food, but the food is not food trucks. It's going to be restaurants that are there so that we can support the folks whose businesses are there. Because the main point behind this festival is to help out those businesses who suffered during the pandemic. And so this is their way to give back, to commune with the folks that are there while supporting and putting some money back in the coffers and giving the community something fun to do on those days. So local vendors, area agencies, CADA, Sparrow, Eastside businesses all involved in this. I would highly recommend folks go to this. It is going to be from 4:00 to 11:00 on that Friday, August 27th, and Saturday, 10:00 to 10:00 on August 28th. We will note that the request came in for $500 from community use funding. Because of the nature of this and the amount of people that it will serve on the East Side, we, by recommendation from Councilmember Hussein, doubled that to $1,000. So I move for approval.
Great. That's a proper motion. Just want to say thanks, Nancy, for putting this together. I know you've been working hard at this for several months, and appreciate that it's coming to fruition. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the reappointment of John Fulkers as the first ward member of the Board of Ethics for a term to expire June 30th, 2021, 2025. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Typical to council, the mayor requests that the ward reps take a look at who the Board of Ethics appointee for the ward will be. Mr. Fulkers has served with distinguishment over the last few years, and I would move that we reappoint him for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
This is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor would please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
All right. Next, we're to resolutions for action.
First item is a claim appeal. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. All right. This one was quite a doozy. This was a claim appeal, 1847, for Brandy Day, and the amount of $8,890 for trash fees at 1040 North Cedar Street. And the, the claimant did not show Scott Sanford was there from code compliance. We had quite a few pictures, letters, documentation, and pretty much what happened was the, the claimant said that the mail didn't, she didn't get it. And the address that's on the rental certificate for communications is exactly the place that it was sent to. It appeared that the trash at this location was that they were scrapping trailers, camper trailers for the metal, and that there were just pieces of it strewn all over the backyard. And there was quite a number of yards that were taken away as a result of it. And we denied the claim for $8,890.
Council, Mr. Vice President.
Want to also note that although the claimant said that they did not get the mail, they had actually, as a result of the mail, they had actually entered into an extension agreement with Code in order to clean this up, and unfortunately didn't meet that deadline either. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar, I missed it. Was there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. All right. There is a proper motion before us. Any further discussion? The motion before us is to deny the claim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item is a show cause hearing, setting a show cause hearing in consideration of a make safe or demolish. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is a setting of a show cause hearing in consideration to make, for orders to make safe or demolish the owners of property located at 125 East Mount Hope. Code Compliance Officer red-tagged the building June 7th, 2020, and requested the property ordered to be ordered to demolish or otherwise make safe the building. On May 27th, 2021, the Lansing Demolition Board held a special meeting and ordered the property owners to make safe or demolish the structure by June 27th, 2021. The Code Compliance Office has determined that the compliance with the Order of Lansing Demolition Hearing Board Officer has not occurred. As of June 29th, that was the last public safety meeting we had, no permits were pulled at that time. And the owner stated that they would tear down the house, but no action has been done as of yet. So obviously, you can see the pictures here. It's a fire damaged property. Lansing City Council hereby schedules a show cause hearing for Monday, August 23rd, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Lansing City Council Chambers. And with that, I'd move the resolution.
This is a proper motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with those, yeah, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, after 18 months of roll calls, I'm still in the habit. Next item comes to us from the Committee on Ways and Means. It's the fiscal year 2021 emergency carryforwards. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. The resolution that we have before us has to do with carryforwards coming from the mayor's office of $60,000, from the Parks Department of $40,000, and from the Police Department, which is from the crossing guards account of $80,000. If you remember, by state law, we're required to have crossing guards, and with the fact that school was not in session during the, the period of last year's budget, this money wasn't utilized. So that equates to $180,000. The proposal that we have before us is to use that $180,000 for mentoring, after-school activities, athletics, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, and also the A is being used for agriculture and small community organization grants. The groups that would be handling the mentoring would be the Turning Point of Lansing, Petals and Pine Combs, Building Child and Family Institute. This is a subset of Black Child and Family Institute. After-school activities would be the South Side Community Coalition, the YMCA of Lansing. Athletics would be Lansing Kappa Foundation. The Science STEM would be the Next Young Phenomena Foundation, and Mickey 23 Foundation. Then there will be small grants going to the Small Community Organization Funds. Those Small Community Organizations Funds are looking at grants of $1,000 to $2,000. And those grants will be handled similar as to neighborhood grants that are, are designated when the neighborhoods ask for neighborhood dollars. So that would come to $180,000. The goal is, after this money is appropriated, to get that money out so that these different groups that I've mentioned can start their programming to, to be able to use this over the summer and into the fall of this calendar year. With that, I would move the resolution. We do have Nick Tate here from the mayor's office. If we have any additional questions, then I can answer, try to answer any questions, other questions that might arise. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Sure. Given that this had come from the administration, is there anything you want to add, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I think that Councilmember, Councilwoman Wood did a great job. That explains it. I just want to kind of explain where this came from. We, we set a gun violence task force combining both many department directors and some outside entities, and they sat with a lot of different groups and talked through. And what I believe they heard over and over again was, we need to do something now with groups that are existing and doing the work. So what dollars do we have? We got our finance people involved and looked at the, the carryforwards, which we do every year. You all know that. Normally, this money would go into reserves, but we do some carryforwards. And as the councilwoman said, there were, there were some dollars due to COVID. Because we had operations that didn't happen during COVID, it normally would have reverted to reserves, which is always a good thing. But in this case, we all know that there is an emergency that needs to be handled right now. And getting these dollars out to those organizations already doing the work and helping them to expand either, either more time for their staff or more space or any of those things is important. You know, setting up new, new, new processes, we didn't know if there was staff out there. We didn't know what's available immediately. So trying to help those that are doing the work. I know that several organizations were listed, but we're certainly open to others. We're getting calls and emails, and they all go to Nick Tate and Delisa Fontaine, and they are leading that effort. So they are both here, if you have any questions. But, but I think this would be a good usage of these dollars rather than letting them revert to the revert, the reserves this time.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess just, I don't plan to hold this up with a no vote or anything, not that that would hold it up. But I guess my question is, how are the groups determined? I know we listed a lot, and I know you mentioned that the administration's open to more. I was just curious on how that initial, like is there application or whoever wants it gets vetted? How does that work?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Tate, or Delisa?
I'm going to ask Nick Tate and Delisa Fontaine to come forward and discuss where those came from. And the, as Councilwoman Wood said, we are going to have a pot of dollars that people will be able to apply for so that nobody is left out. But in terms of the organizations that we already know are doing the work, we'll see if Nick and Delisa and Jake Brower can address that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Jackson. Can you all hear me okay?
It's a, just pull it closer.
Is this better?
Closer.
Can you hear me? Hear me now? Thank you. Okay. So the groups were originally chosen based on whether the city had had previous work with them. Those were groups that we had worked with in the past, that had been previously vetted, and we also knew had the immediate capacity in order to do the work that we need. Having said that, we also have to recognize that there's groups that, that are just starting out that are also doing great work. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't, we wanted to make sure we provided them an opportunity as well. And that's where the small organizational, or excuse me, the small organization fund comes in. So while we're looking at those established groups, by no means is that, just, just because you worked with the city in the past, that doesn't mean that it's a disqualifier. We're still willing to speak with other groups that are in the community that are doing the work.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
If I could add, the qualifications for the larger amounts were the fact that they had to have corporation nonprofits registered with the state. They had to have bylaws. They had to have proof of the 990 IRS form, accomplishments, things that they had accomplished since they've been in, established, and that the activities happened in Lansing, and that they focused on the city youth.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Vice President.
Actually, you know, I'm going to defer to Councilman Garza.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a, a suggestion or an ask, I guess. I don't see it on here, and I'm just hoping in the future we can take a look at this. It's my understanding that the last administration raised the, the cost for Lansing Park and Recreation for the different sport programs that they had, and they raised it to a substantial amount to where we lost quite a bit of participation with the groups, the different groups. So I would hope that at some point, we would look at revisiting that and lowering the cost to see if we could get more of the youth involved in our Lansing Park and Recs. Thank you.
If I could respond to?
Yeah, I think we.
We did ask the question, Councilmember Garza, in the committee. That is something that they're willing to look at. But the other thing is capacity. Right now, they have over 100 youth signed up for the summer camps, but cannot hire people to, to staff those. And so are not able, and they have scholarships with those. So they're not able to do more because they cannot hire the adequate staff to take those things on. So, you know, lowering fees, but then not being able to have the, the appropriate staff isn't going to answer the question. So we just need to work on trying to get people willing to go in there and do those things.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know it's not necessarily part of the conversation. I want to add to what Councilwoman Wood just said. Our park staff has been trying to be extremely Our park staff has been trying to be extremely flexible. One of the things that we have done is approach the state about trying to use younger staff for, as counselors. Now, you don't want to use someone too young, but I believe you have to be, it gets 18 right now, and we have approached the state about being able to use some 17-year-olds. And we've been back and forth with Laura on certification. So we are trying to be as flexible as we can for that, and certainly we'll look at, you know, all of the different pieces to this, cost, scholarships, all of that. But our park staff has done a tremendous job in trying to be flexible. But again, it's a good reason why we're working with many of these organizations that are established, because that way, we can provide them some dollars. They can have staff on for more hours, and they can, you know, utilize their existing resources and stretch them longer rather than trying to hire new staff, which we can't hire, they can't hire, nobody can seem to get new staff. So let's use the existing staff if they're part-time, let's add a few more hours, things like that.
Thank you. Very good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. And item nine was not passed through committee at the whole.
Okay, then we are on to ordinance for introduction, and I'll read into the record the five ordinances. The Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance to City Lansing to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Lansing by adding a new section 888 for the purpose of providing for service charge in lieu of taxes for 75 low-income multifamily dwellings in a project known as Apartment West pursuant to the provision of State Housing Development Authority of 1966. Ordinance read by first time, referred to the Committee on Development and Planning. Next, Committee on Development and Planning has an ordinance to City Lansing to amend the code ordinances of the City of Lansing by adding a new section 888 for the purpose of providing for service charge in lieu of taxes for 76 low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Walter French pursuant to the provision of the State Housing Development Authority. Ordinance read by first time, by its title, referred to the Committee on Development and Planning. Next one, Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance to City Lansing to amend the code ordinances of City Lansing to add a new section 888 for the purpose of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for 222 low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Cedar Place pursuant to the provision of the State Housing Development Act of 1966. Ordinance read for first time and referred to Committee on Development and Planning. Number four, the Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance to City Lansing to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Lansing by adding a new section 884 for the purpose of providing an extension of the service charge in lieu of taxes for 98 low-income elderly dwelling units in a project known as the Porter Senior Apartments pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority of 1966. And last, well, this is ordinance read the first time by its title and referred to Committee on Development and Planning. And last, Councilmember Spitzley introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing to amend the Lansing codified ordinance by amending chapter 658, section 658.03, to replace willful annoyance with the prohibition that no person shall threaten another person by word of mouth, gesture, or other physical action that accosts, molests, or otherwise harasses the other person. Ordinance read to the Committee on Equity Diversion and Inclusion.
Thank you. We'll take these one at a time. Councilmember Spitzley, number 10, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. What you have before us, and the four pilots are all going to be set up for a public hearing scheduled for August 23rd, but, and that each one of the pilots that are up for public hearing will be here on August 23rd, 2021, to give a presentation on their project right before the public hearing so that the public and council can get a full understanding of the projects that they will be considering. The Apartments, which is 519 West Palamazoo Street, is requesting a 4% pilot for 40 years. This is a collaboration between General Capital Community Advancement Advisors and the Lansing Housing Commission. This is the former West Junior School on West Palamazoo Street that they would be turning into senior housing. And with that, I will move the resolution to establish the public hearing set for Monday, August 23rd, 2021.
All right, that's a proper motion. Any discussion on setting the public hearing? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the, can I do this? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. See, I told you, habits.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is another payment in lieu of taxes for Walter French. This one is really, we've approved this before, but HUD required some amended language. Specifically, they talked about removing the language as it related to prevailing wage, and that is going to be removed out of the application and put into a side agreement. And so this is a 6% pilot for 20 years, and so we have to have a new public hearing for the new language. But this has already been previously approved by council, but because of that substantive change, we have to bring it back out for public comment. And so with that, I will move the resolution establishing the public hearing for August 23rd, 2021.
Thank you. That's a proper motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Councilmember Spitzley, item 12.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a payment in lieu of taxes for Cedar Place, 201 West Jolly Road. It's right in front of the Gardner Middle School. They have just become recent, well, they've owned the building since 2017. They are also requesting a 4% pilot for 40 years. They will also be here on the 23rd to give a more comprehensive, a more comprehensive presentation on their proposal. And with that, Mr. President, I move the resolution to set the public hearing for Monday, August 23rd, 2021.
As a proper motion, question from Councilmember Dunbar.
I don't know what the work is going to be done, and I'm going to vote for this so that we can have the public hearing, but I do want people to be aware that I've gotten several communiques from folks who live there. And the pilot, to me, is usually something that you get to keep rent down so that you can make improvements, and their rent is being increased by 25% starting January 1st. So I am going to be very inquisitive as to why we would give them a break when they're raising rent on seniors. Thanks.
What we were told in development and planning is that as part of the refinancing, rents will be going up, but the subsidy will be the same, and so they won't be paying additional rent because the subsidy from the federal government will take that rent, will take up the rent increase. But you could talk to them.
Sure.
And that can be a question for them on August 23rd.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
The last, excuse me, the last one we have is a payment in lieu of taxes for the Porter Apartment Buildings on 505 Townsend Street. The new owners came before the development and planning. They've owned the Porter since May, no, I'm sorry, since March. They just received, they just, it was in May, I'm sorry, it's May. They, now I'm all tongue tied. Let me start over again. Payment in lieu of taxes for the Porter Apartments, 505 Townsend Street. These are new owners. They just got ownership of the apartment complex May 21st. We also explained to them that they need to be here on August 23rd to give a more comprehensive proposal on their redevelopment and their plans. With that, I will move for a public hearing to be set on Monday, August 23rd.
As a proper motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Although the noes were louder, I'll just say the ayes have it.
It was singular but mighty.
The ayes have it. Next item, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a motion to set a public hearing for the amendment of chapter 658.03 to replace the language of willful annoyance with the prohibition that no one shall threaten another person by word of mouth, gesture, or other physical action that accosts, molests, or otherwise harasses the other victim. These are, this is the last one, I think, Councilmember Jackson, of Councilmember Jackson's efforts to go through the code and address or amend some issues that he had of concern. This was the last one. We worked on this language with the city attorney quite a bit to get to, in our diversity, in our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee, to get to language that still maintained, I think, the integrity of the statute, but also kind of made it a lot more direct and less ambiguous. Would that be fair to say? All right. So with that, unless the city attorney has anything to say, I will set the public hearing for this.
It just, I think you've captured it. It makes it more specific so that it could pass legal muster in a better fashion.
Thank you. There is a motion before us?
And for the, I think the public hearing is set for, again, August 23rd, 2021.
It's a motion by Councilmember Spitzley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, next, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. For anyone like to speak, you have about 30 seconds. Head on up to fill out a yellow sheet to do so. And we have the reports of city officer boards and commissions.
Mr. Vice President.
I would move that all items be considered as read in full and that appropriate referrals be made by the president.
That is a proper motion, and it is appreciated. With all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so we have items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commission.
Please unfill.
We have items from the mayor, sole source purchase notification, legal solution, blue line law firm for the Lansing Police Department to provide consultation for conducting an independent review of LPD policies and procedures with the guidelines of President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing.
Ways and Means.
We have a setting a public hearing, considering ordinance to amend chapter in question to create the Arts and Culture Board.
That's committee at the whole.
All right, we have another ordinance to create a new chapter, yeah, ordinance to create a new chapter to create the Arts and Culture Board.
Committee at the whole.
We have a setting a public hearing, consideration of annoyance special permit, M.D. request to allow I-496 freeway reconstruction on weekdays from eight, at night till seven in the morning, and any time on the weekends or holidays for period from January 24th, 2022, through December 1st, 2022, and for period of March 1st, 2023, through November 15th, 2023.
The Committee on City Operations.
And then we have the annoyance special permit itself.
That is also the Committee on City Operations.
All right, grant acceptance, financial distress cities, village, and township grant.
Committee on Ways and Means.
We have a fee reduction, non-sufficient funds check fee.
Committee on Ways and Means.
We have appointment of Amanda DeFries as a member of the South Lansing Luther King Junior Boulevard Quarter Improvement Authority, Board of Directors for a term to expire July 31st, 2025.
Committee on Development and Planning.
We have reappointment of Nancy Malo as the first ward member of the Board of Public Service for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Committee on City Operations.
And setting a show cause hearing consideration of orders to make safe or demolish to owner property located at 1113 West Saginaw.
Committee on Public Safety.
And then we actually have the orders to make safe or demolish to the owner's property located at 1113 West Saginaw.
The Committee on Public Safety.
We have an affidavit disclosure for Manny Bezenger from Lansing Police Department.
The Ethics Board.
We have a communication for Dorothy Johnson regarding streetlights and speeding on Cavanaugh Road.
Please unfill.
And then we have a communication from the M County Drain Commissioner regarding the resolution and proven agreement to transfer jurisdiction, operation, maintenance, and control from Delta Grand Drainage District to the City of Lansing.
It's my understanding this is informational, so let's place that on file.
We have two remarks by city council.
I just have a quick one that I just forgot. This weekend, Saturday, August 14th, the Eastside Community Action Center will hold their annual community champion salute. And it's a dinner. The dinner will be held at the Eastside Community Action Center located inside Faith Fellowship Baptist Church at 1001 Dakin Street in Lansing. It's their main fundraising event, and their community champion and honoree this year is Mr. Wayne Lynn, who is the Director of Transmission and Distribution Operations and Engineering for the Lansing Board of Water and Light. They, you know, and they go in and talk about his many community, things that he does in the community. He's also the chairman of the Deacons Ministry at Union Baptist, Union Missionary Baptist Church. And so they are having a dinner, and they're selling the dinner. Even more importantly, they're offering folks the chance to drive by and pick up a plate, which is what I'm going to be doing on Saturday. But I wanted to let people know that this is their annual fundraising event, and it's for a great cause. Thank you.
All right, and everybody say it with me. The Senior Activities Fair is August 12th from 9:00 to 2:00. All right. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So this is just a thought as I see our crowd dwindling at this hour. It reminds me of opposite of our pandemic times on Zoom where we had so much more participation. And I remember talking about trying to continue that somehow when we come back. So I was wondering, you know, if we could, we don't have to talk about it now, but if there's a way we could still have a hybrid, even though it's been kind of put on the back burner since we've been back, just to keep the participation up so people don't have to sit in here the whole time, and more people can participate. That's ultimately what we want, so. And we kind of did say we would try to look into that, so hopefully we can follow through sometime.
Sure, I'll address that right now, actually, because I've heard it circulating in committees as well. We have looked into it. We're trying to address it. The issue comes because of the complications related to how we broadcast, that it's very staff-intensive, so it's very expensive endeavor. So we're still trying to overcome those hurdles, but it's certainly something we could look at as we start setting up budget priorities for next year. When we were doing this offline, we didn't need city TV to run the TV system because the cameras were all in our living rooms and home offices and things like that. So we are looking at possibilities to try and bring it in, but it's complicated, and other places are doing it differently, but it's complicated here in the City of Lansing because of the way we do our city TV broadcast, our web broadcast, and also simultaneously running a Zoom meeting along with it. So looking into it, trying to remove some of those barriers. There's a possibility that we could do it for committee meetings much easier because it's just a Zoom setup. So folks can do that and weigh in on committee meetings. That's going to have to have a discussion with the chairs of how they're going to run their committees. But a cow and council, it is very complicated due to the way we broadcast and how we do it here in the booth. So if it's not a no, it's just that we're still trying to explore the possibility.
Seeing no further comments, Mr. Clerk?
All right, then we're remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, no.
Then we're on to public government and city government related matters. You have three minutes to speak on any city-related matters. Our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, then followed by Dorothy Johnson.
And while Ms. Stanaway is approaching, I'll just remind folks, please keep your mask on during public comments so we don't have to sanitize the microphone.
Okay, well, to follow up on Brian's comments, it's very copacetic. I was going to stress again the fact that when you have 5 o'clock cow meetings, it is virtually impossible for anyone that works a 5 o'clock job to get down here and have a chance to do public comment. So as I mentioned last time, I would really appreciate if you could look at somehow addressing the agenda order when you have a 5 p.m. start to cow so that it does give people a chance to come down here and participate, because right now, it's almost impossible. And then complicating that is parking. The last time and this time, I got parking tickets, parking in front of City Hall to come in here so I could be here in time to do public comment during cow. And I know that that's my responsibility, but it's also a different situation when you pull into park, you have five minutes to get through security, and up here, you don't have change in your wallet, you don't know how to use the passport system, and what do you do? You come up, you get a parking ticket. So I think there was, and I might be wrong about this, but I think there was in the past, an informal policy that on nights council was meeting, the parking people were instructed not to ticket people in front of City Hall. Now, I don't know if that's accurate. That's what I had heard. And if it is an accurate representation, and if it's possible to do that again, I'd like to see that reinstated. Also, just as an aside, how long has it been since Scott Park Sunken Garden got moved and opened? There is still no signage out at the road to. There is still no signage out at the road to indicate that Scott Park Sunken Garden is where it is. I think it's long overdue. I know COVID slowed things down, but that signage needs to get up. Thank you.
Okay, next is Dorothy Johnson, followed by Kyle Richard.
Hi, Dorothy Johnson, 30-year homeowner in the City of Lansing. My white privilege concerns. As a homeowner, I've had deer eating my hosta, they eat my vegetables on my vacant lot, and I would like to know if there's deer population control measures in place. I would like to see native planting policy implemented because I'm dealing with code enforcement when someone doesn't like the height of my black-eyed Susans or my Astors. As a voter, I want to see ranked choice put on the ballot so that I, as a voter, can say that I want ranked choice voting. And as I, and when I worked the election on the absentee ballot accounting board, on our software, it says on, says on there ranked choice. So there's ways to do it, it's just a matter of question of whether people are willing to do the technological concerns or put the money forth to do it. And over the last few year, couple of years, I've become much more aware of what my white privilege gives me, and I have to say that I'm ashamed of the City of Lansing for what happened in the Anthony Hulan case. That it was kept quiet is shameful, that it happened is shameful, and I question what kind of justice we get in this city. Another minor note, it looks like we got new black uniforms for policemen. Those make me uncomfortable, make me think I'm working in a police state as opposed to public, or uniforms that make me feel like I have a public safety officer or a public service officer who's addressing concerns. And that's it, basically. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Kyle Richard, followed by our last speaker, Kelsey Hudson.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, for your question about hybrid meetings. I hope everyone had a good primary day. Mine was all right. I was voter number 49 at Let's Community Center here in the fourth ward. And I had a whole thing about how the bus makes things accessible because my car broke down on primary day, and I took the bus here today. And so the bus made this meeting accessible to me. But the bus doesn't work for everyone, it doesn't work for everyone's schedule. And so, you know, I really do think that this needs to be a priority. I think budget priorities for next year is a long time away. And to say it's complicated because of the way we do it, then evolve, change, grow, something like, oh, it's complicated. If it's complicated, then get creative, come up with a solution. The, I, I, like I said, budget priorities for next year are a really long time away. It doesn't need to be Zoom. It doesn't need, it can be a call-in feature, it could literally, like, they're, this should not be that hard. It shouldn't. And I get that technology's complicated, right? Technology's hard, technology is, you know, good and evil at the same time. You know, it helps us, but it also hinders us. I'd ask that you please make this a priority because people need to be able to speak at these meetings. You see the room tonight. The, yeah, I guess with about a minute left, I'll just say thank you to the CADA workers who helped me over the last couple of days on the bus, and let's please make sure that they get a contract that they want and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kelsey Hudson.
My name is Kelsey, you can call me Kels, and I'm here to also speak on the hybrid model. Thank you, Congress, or sorry, Councilmember Jackson for bringing that up. It's like so important, and I know that it's, it's, it may seem complex, it may seem like it's a huge deal, and I get that, like, if these things don't happen, you have to have systems in place. However, this is like a very, very, very important thing, because there are people who are not here tonight who need to be here. Last time Kyle spoke on my behalf, because last time I was here because I have a chronic illness, I was using a scooter at Meyer because I could not walk to get my prescription in the store because I have chronic pain. Do you know what that's like, to not be able to be at a council meeting because I physically can't be there? Do you know what it's like to lose a child to gun violence? Oh, sorry, to lose a child to gun violence and not be able to sit and speak your truth? That's the urgency we have, that is the issue we have at hand. Tonight I brought my friend Angie Weber, who it took us a while to get from our card here, but we wanted to show up, we wanted to show our support for hybrid model. Looks like Angie have a story to tell, a very important story to tell about her brain injury and also the things that she brings to the table as far as advocacy and the story that she's lived before her injury. And so it's just a shame that we don't have that, it brings heaviness on my heart. Mayor Schr, I am so embarrassed that you had the audacity to talk about the 30th anniversary of ADA last time without having hybrid model. Like, you're speaking, like, I am embarrassed to be a citizen of Lansing and have that happen, like, that's beyond me. Heather Hielan should be here, speaking about her brother, and she's not able to be here because of repercussions of trauma on her not being able to be here. Like, we pay you. Like, you're, I understand that's a very audacious and probably a rude thing to say, but like, your job is to listen to us. And there are some nights I might not be able to be here because of my chronic illness, but I'm going to show up as much as physically impossible. It doesn't have to be Zoom, it doesn't have to be a call-in feature, but like, let's try harder, because we can do better. I know we can. I've lived in Lansing my entire life, was born at Sparrow. Lansing has the ability to do better, and let's do that. So I also want to speak in, we have three seconds left, in support of ranked choice voting, as well as I'm also very concerned about the black uniforms that are police officers, that just, yeah, that's very concerning. Black Lives Matter, and yeah, as well as the CADA workers, I, it was, we had a great primary, it was wonderful to see everyone come out, and I just hope that that accessibility continues with CADA, and we just increased that. Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating. At 8:36, there is no further business for this meeting in the Lansing City Council, and we stand adjourned.